Mic's working again.
Alright.
Hey, how do, uh, I don't know how to sign in. Am I signed in?
To what?
Look right here. I don't know, I just download, this is an app.
And then you have to go to the 2018 conference. The 2018 on your conference. I guess you have to download that.
Alright, we'll do it.
Alright, welcome tonight to our May 2nd school board meeting. I'd like to start off with the asking everybody to rise for the pledge of allegiance presented by the Como High School Naval ROTC, followed by a moment of silence afterwards. No show, so we'll start the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Aguilar, do you have any opening comments tonight?
Yes, sir, thank you. Congratulations to, goes out to Amanda Shackelford of Judy's Middle School and Sarah Arseneau of LJ Alamon Middle School as they have been recognized as springboard teachers of distinction. Ms. Shackelford and Ms. Arseneau went through a very rigorous application process where they demonstrated effective teaching practices and successful implementation. These teachers will become a member of the Springboard Teacher Advisory Council. They will have the opportunity to review new materials, participate in pilot opportunities, attend the Springboard Annual Conference and AP Annual Conference. Thank you for your dedication to provide high-quality instruction. Congratulations to Jonathan Cole, a social studies teacher at Lafayette High. He's in the audience tonight. Congratulations, Jonathan. He is the winner of the 2018 Louisiana Association of Educators Teacher Image Award. The award recognizes Louisiana educators whose leadership and actions have advanced public education in the state. Every year, the LAE chooses one teacher to receive the LAE Teacher Image Award. Mr. Cole will now be submitted, I guess not actually, but your packet will be, for the National Education Association Foundation Awards for Teaching Excellence Best of Look. And congratulations. Festival International is known for its role in helping preserve Akkadiana's French culture and this year, the festival honored Lafayette School for its efforts to keep the French language alive. Myrtle Place Elementary School received the Seal of Quality Bilingual Education in French from the French consulate. And congratulations to the staff at Paulborough Middle School as they also will be receiving the Seal of Quality Bilingual Education in French. Congratulations goes out to one of our juniors, a junior at Lafayette High School, Hannah Michel, who earned the highest possible ACT score of 36. On average, about 0.1% of students who take the ACT earn a top score. In the United States, high school graduating class of 2017, only 2,760 out of more than 2 million graduates who took the ACT test earned a perfect score. And next week is Teacher Appreciation Week and I want to take this opportunity to thank all of our employees for their time and dedication given to our students to provide a safe environment, high-quality education, and to support students' emotional, psychological, social, and physical growth and needs. I truly appreciate the care and attention that is given and provided to our students by way of our professional staff. So I hope everyone has a great Teacher Appreciation Week. And Mr. Kinesik, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, sir. The next thing on the agenda is the Board Member 2017 Continuing Learning Units.
Members of the Board, LSBA just recently sent us the final tabulation for continuing unit hours earned by Board members in the prior year. Congratulations to those people who have completed the minimum requirement of six hours. Special congratulations goes out to Mr. Angel, Ms. Morrison, Mr. Elroy Broussard, and Ms. Dawn Morris. You guys are recognized specifically for earning 20 or more continuing ed unit hours. And in the documentation that's posted on the agenda, it incorrectly shows Ms. Morris with 27.25 hours. The corrected amount is 36.25 continuing ed hours. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move that we go into executive session concerning pending litigation in the matter of Pat Cooper versus Lafayette Parish School Board, suit number 2017-0968, 15th Judicial District Court, Lafayette Parish.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to go into executive session to discuss the Pat Cooper versus Lafayette Parish School Board suit, number 2017-0968. All those in, all those in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going into executive session, which means we need to go back into that room and discuss some stuff. We will be back out very shortly. Thank you.
I need a motion to get back in the regular session. Just give me one, two, three.
Make a motion.
Yep.
I move to go back, I move to go back in the regular session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go back into regular session. We're going to do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Our meeting's back in the regular session. Thank you for your patience. Next item on the agenda is 2.1 Human Resources Personnel Changes from May 2, 2018. Ms. Thibodeau.
Mr. Kenezic, the, uh, the attachment shows the personnel changes. We have no introductions tonight.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Administrative Guidelines for Business Services Division Purchasing Schedule of Bidding Requirements and Travel Reimbursement. Mr. Gidry.
Yes, uh, these, uh, guidelines covered, uh, two areas. The first is in the area of purchasing. Uh, the change that, changes that have been made to the guidelines, uh, include changes necessary to reflect, uh, changes in the federal, uh, laws, uh, referred to as EDGAR, for, and to reflect locally, uh, the change in the threshold for requiring three quote, three quotes. Uh, it's being changed from fifteen thousand to fifty thousand, uh, simply to basically free up the day-to-day activities, uh, for, for the lesser amounts. The, the general rule is, uh, when looking at the guidelines now is you look at federal requirements, you look at state requirements, and you look at local requirements, and whichever one's the strictest, that's the one you follow. Uh, and so at this point, the state has no requirements. The federal level is a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, so we felt like, uh, that, that was a bit too high for a local, uh, so, uh, we went with fifty, uh, on that. And then the, that's the first area. The second area, it relates to travel reimbursement. As part of our ongoing IRS audit, uh, well, it's ongoing, but we're nearing completion, uh, one of the things that was mentioned is when there is travel, that's, that does not require overnight stay, uh, that, that travel, if there's a per diem reimbursement, uh, that per diem reimbursement amount would have to be included as income on the employee's W-2. Uh, so, uh, admin, we've changed administrative guidelines, basically just to remove that reimbursement for, uh, per diem altogether, uh, and that, that is the only change there.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is 2.3 Half-Cents, 2002 Half-Cent Sales Tax Interest Reserve Payment to Classroom Teachers, 2017, 2018. Mr. Gidry.
We've included the, uh, calculation which is totally, is determined by the amount of interest, uh, earned on the 2002 sales tax collections. Total amount of a hundred nine thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars, uh, to be distributed amongst twenty-two hundred eligible, uh, classroom teachers, uh, in arriving at a per teacher, per eligible participant amount of forty-nine dollars and eighty cents. This information's, uh, being, being, this item's been provided as an information item since, uh, this is included in the administrative plan. It's, it's a requirement.
Great. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, 2.4 Finance List of Bids Approved to Be Advertised by the Superintendent. Dr. Aguilat.
We, we bring this, uh, list to you monthly. It's just the list of bids that have gone out, uh, in the last thirty days.
Great. Thank you. Now that brings us to our consent agenda. I'm going to read each item on the agenda, and I'll ask my fellow board members to let us know which items they'd like to pull for further discussion. 3.1 SRO Expansion Objectives. 3.2 Superintendent's Annual Evaluation. 3.3 Resolution 05181930 for Teacher Appreciation Week.
Pull that, please.
3.4 Administration, 2018, 2019 Student Parent Handbook. 3.5 Facilities Approval of Change Order Items for Como High Performing Arts Academy Building. 3.6 Approval to Advertise and Accept Proposals, Interpreter Services. 3.7 Grant Fund Summary, April 2018. 3.8 Budget to Actual Reports, April 2018. 3.9 Approval to Advertise and Accept Proposals, RFP Number, Draft, Universal Screening and Progress Monitoring.
Pull that, please.
3.10 Resolution 05181931 for Immigration Attorney. 3.11 Plumber 3 Job Description. 3.12 2018, 2019 Salary Schedule Booklet. 3.13 Guidelines for the Evaluation and Assessment of School Personnel. 3.14 Adoption of Policy DFAB Industrial Tax Exemptions.
Pull that.
3.15 Revisions to Policy ECA Authorized Use of Equipment. 3.16 Revisions to Policy GBNA Reduction in Personnel.
Pull it, please.
3.17 Approval of Quotes for Annual Screen and Recode of Gym Floors. 3.18 Approval of Minutes. All right, so to summarize, we've pulled 3.1, 3.3, 3.9, 3.14, 3.16.
Mr. President. I move that we approve all items, not pull from the agenda with the following change. Item 3.11, change plumber 3 to plumber 2.
I'll second that motion.
Motion on the floor to approve all items not pulled with the exception, uh, editing 3.11 to, to read plumber 2 and not plumber 3. Motion by Mr. Hidalgo, second by Mr. Lachey. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask if the public has any comments on the items that are not pulled. So it would be items that I did not summarize. If there's anything you want to talk about regarding any of the items listed on the agenda with the exception of 3.1, 3.3, 3.9, 3.14, and 3.16, we're going to address those later. This would be the time to have public comment. All right, any board member comment on any of the items not pulled? Madam Secretary, a call for the vote. We have a motion, uh, and by Mr. Hidalgo, second by Mr. Angel, to approve Resolution 05181930 for Teacher Appreciation Week. All right, um, at this time, I'd like to open up for any public comment on this item. Anybody wants to comment on the Resolution 05181930 for Teacher Appreciation Week? No public comment. Any board member comment? I think Mr. Hidalgo wants to read it. Anyone can read it up there. That would be great.
Okay. Thank you. I wasn't sure that's, that was my cue or not.
Yes, ma'am.
Teacher Appreciation Week Resolution 5-18-1930. Whereas teachers personify America's belief that universal public education is a key to meeting the challenges of our changing world, and whereas teachers strive to make every classroom an exciting, productive place to learn and grow, and whereas teachers reach out to foster the well-being of each student regardless of ability, social, or economic background, race, ethnic, origin, or religion, and whereas teachers motivate individual students to find new direction in life and to reach high levels of achievement, and whereas teachers influence our lives long after our school days are only memories. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Lafayette Parish School Board proclaim the week of May 7 through 11, 2018, as Teacher Appreciation Week, and urge all citizens to observe this week by taking time to remember and salute the teachers who shaped the future of our children, our community, and the community of nations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item is 3.1, SRO Expansion Objectives.
Mr. President, I would point out that we should probably vote on that.
Nope. I'm sorry. Jet lagged. Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I call for the vote on the, uh, resolution. Thank you. a monitor here now, um, which we can discuss further later, but what's interesting is we're trying to evaluate some of the problems we're having with our system, and, um, two of our board members have already been able to vote. So it appears it may be, I don't know, maybe a connection issue with all of our computers and whatever's sending the signal, or...
Mr. President, I can clear the vote and try it again.
We can, I think we can voice vote. I just wanted to let you guys know that's what the extras, the monitor is, but I'm noticing two people have voted, so only two people have had the opportunity to vote, and the rest of us are still waiting for it to pop up. So, Madam Secretary, I'm going to call for a voice vote. All in favor of approving Resolution 05181930, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. We're now going to move on to item 3.1, and Mr. Santani, thank you very much for keeping me on track. So this is, uh, SRO Expansion Objectives.
Mr. President, I move that the board approves the SRO Program Expansion Objectives.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Santani and a second by Ms. Morris to approve the SRO Expansion Objectives. And at this time, I'd like to call for any public comment on this item. All right, any board member comment on this item? I'll be happy to.
I would love to hear a, a piece about, uh, how this, how we arrived at this and, and what this is going, hopefully going to achieve.
Sure. So, in the simplest sense, the board is trying to be proactive in increasing school security across the parish. Currently, we don't have an SRO at every school. Uh, in order to expand to every school and then also provide adequate coverage for, say, the, the population of the larger schools where we may have to have more than one SRO, we're talking about, um, almost tripling the size of our current force. In order to do that, it obviously takes significant coordination with the chiefs of police and the sheriff who are providing the SROs, some, some of which are represented here in our meeting tonight. So to get to that point, um, and also in order to, for one government entity or any business or government entity to provide services to another, typically those are some type of legal agreement, memorandum of understanding or contract. In order to expand the program to the scale that we're expanding, and in order to make sure that we have those necessary contracts in place, um, it's, it's a very much moving target. We have, uh, no less than seven different police agencies. We have nine board members, and it's a, it's a constant moving target that we're trying to do. So what we're trying to do as a board is agree on some primary objectives and some secondary objectives. Um, those objectives are, well, I can't, let's see, I can, I will read them to you. The primary objectives are to increase our number of SROs to provide armed protection at every campus. Uh, the total of SRO force will expand from twenty-four to about seventy, and the about part is that there are still some, I mean, we're constantly growing, uh, system. We have, uh, schools that we're building, schools that, that will expand. Our population fluctuates each year, uh, and then there are some decisions that need to be made, uh, along the way on number of supervisors, and then the type of support personnel, uh, intelligence analysts, detectives, and those sorts of things. Uh, the next objective is, is to establish a school security organizational structure with the consistent training, reporting structure, intelligence, information, communications, and standard operating procedures that meet or exceed best practices. The intent of that objective is to make sure that no matter what color of uniform an officer is wearing, that their procedures for standard items, uh, how they will handle a student in different situations, or how they will handle certain situations with reporting and passing on infor, information both up and down the chain, is consistent across the board. Establish a uni, unity of command structure to enforce consistent training, reporting structure, intelligence, information, communications. So this next bullet basically talks about, well, once you've established this consistency, how do you enforce it over time? Uh, because chiefs of police change, officers change out, board members change out. How do we develop a system, uh, that can be implemented with fidelity, uh, over time? And then establish a span of control not to exceed eight direct reports at any level. Uh, what we've learned, and the board has spent, every board member up here spent a significant amount of time researching, learning about best practices, talking with our, the chiefs and the sheriff and other SRO officers, uh, and one of the things we learned, and depending on your industry, some of this is, uh, these numbers fluctuate again, but at least at this level and at this time, uh, the span of control, you don't want more than five to ten people, there's a, a range of people reporting to, ha, uh, having a su, you don't want one supervisor having more than five to ten direct reports. We picked the number eight, um, because it's roughly in the middle of five and ten, uh, so we have set a span of control not to exceed eight. So S, eight SROs, no more than, if you get to a ninth SRO, they, you would, you would have to have a, a new supervisor so that we don't, so that we can have that consistent span of control across the board for enforcement. We also established some secondary objectives, so long as they're not in conflict with the primary objectives. Uh, one is to, you know, this is a very expensive operation. It's expensive to have up to seven police officers, uh, protecting our schools. We need help. Uh, LPSS was never funded to protect and serve. LPSS is funded to educate. So we're having to use education dollars essentially to protect and serve, to fund the officers. Um, at the same time, we appreciate that we're asking for a service that is above and beyond. We are asking for dedication, officers that are specially trained to deal with children, and that, that can focus their attention on those children during the workday, or during the school day. So, uh, with that, we're asking the local municipalities, uh, if it's within their capability to provide up to fifty percent of the cost of a respective SRO. As you can see, this is a moving target. That means we have to then negotiate and talk with, and, uh, you know, local municipalities, their councils, and get them to assist us through the budget process. Um, I'm also going to add in that this is not an instantaneous thing. We can't vote on it tonight and have these officers in the schools tomorrow. This is a proactive approach that over the next, you know, hopefully six to twenty-four months, we can increase this police force protecting our schools over time. Um, it's kind of the chicken and the egg thing. If we never set these goals and we never set these objectives, we'll never get there. But if we set them today, when this board rolls off in a few years, we'll be there. Um, and I'll also add that although the federal government is talking about it, and although the state government is talking about it, this board has decided not just to talk about it, but to actually take action. It's not easy to take action like this. It's very proactive, and again, when we spend money and when we ask the local municipalities to spend money on school security, we're taking away a limited amount of money. Um, the municipal, we have to choose not to fund other positions, not to fund other educational priorities. The municipalities as well are going to have to choose not to fund something in order to fund school security. Um, so anyway, I commend the board for taking the steps to be proactive. Uh, the next secondary objective is to use local police resource officers where available and, um, they're in compliance with the primary objectives. That is, uh, through the discussions that we've had with the local municipalities, we've realized the value of local policing. Uh, you know, if you think about some of our smaller municipalities especially, uh, the SROs not only know the student, but they probably know the student's father and their grandfather, and they know where the student came from, and they know the family, and they're integrated. They see the student at the grocery store. Um, so that local police, uh, presence is very, very important in making sure that our schools are safe. Uh, and the next is, uh, provide dedicated intelligence analysts as well as investigative and canine services. I'll tell you, one of the things I've learned is that, uh, we have and we do every day, I mean, we don't, but our police forces do gather intelligence at our schools every day. I mean, you see some of it in the paper, but you don't see all of it. Uh, they are stopping crimes before they're happening, they're shifting students that may be troubled to social workers and counselors, and getting them the help they need, talking to their families, and just sometimes being a great mentor. That's one of the unique things about SROs, is that they, they're not only there to enforce the law, but they're also there as role models, mentors. But that intelligence is very important, um, in protecting the students, as well as the investigative and the canine services. One of the things I learned about, uh, the canine services is it's a special dog that you would put in a, uh, in a school, one that, uh, dogs can be dual-trained to be, and I'm going to, in the simplest sense, I'm going to say, uh, passive and/or aggressive. In a school sense, you want a dog that is more passive, and I say would alert, uh, of an issue, but wouldn't necessarily take the student down. We don't want to, not, you know, we don't want a dog attacking a student because they bring contraband. We just want to be alerted so that the officer can take care of it. But that's a special dog with special training. The next one is, SROs would be post-certified. Post-certification is, uh, how police officers are certified. So what we're saying here is that we value a police officer who has been through a police academy and is commissioned as a police officer. This is very different than an armed security guard that we can hire through an armed security service. Uh, they're trained specifically for SRO, school resource officers. They have a special type of training that tells them the, the do's and don'ts, and, and advises them on how to deal with students. Uh, we do want marked police vehicles in front of the, uh, in front of our schools. We want to make sure that if someone is considering committing a crime at a school, that they see the police vehicle and they choose to go elsewhere. Obviously, we want them to have weapons. We also want them to have body cameras and save that data. Um, we need to establish new contracts with these agencies to provide the services and make sure that we have adequate insurance protection. As government entities, we get sued periodically, and we need to make sure that both we and the other police agencies have adequate insurance protection, and that we have mutually agreeable indemnification and legal defense protection. So those are the primary and secondary objectives that we're voting on tonight. It is a lot, um, but I can tell you that it is probably one of the most monumental and important things that this board has done in our term, and we've done a lot of great things. So with that, if anyone wants to make any public comment, or I'll open it back up to the board. Mr. Santani.
Mr. President, while we are going to approve this at some later time, what concerns me is that we're losing the safety officers, and the safety officers are counselors. They can't fill the shoes of the SROs, but they're, they're counselors, and they take, because they play a different role. Um, and I need to ask the question, are we, are they without a job or are they being displaced? If administration could answer that, or do we know?
Well, at this time, Mr. Bruce, uh, well, first off, it's not the motion at hand, but because I understand that it's, there has been conversation on how would we fund this, one of the discussions.
I'm asking that through, to ask some questions, since we, since we are probably no longer have the safety officer. Lot of questions came up with armed police officers, although I said publicly, I disagree with it, but I understand the necessity, and I, and I know we need it. But in the training that we are going to implement to the officers, SRO officers, it has been long asked that the police officers have a sensitivity training. We don't want to play by the rules to where first thing we do, we take down a ten-year-old young man. We always, we see it in the news all the time, and we don't want to have that, that misfortune in our, in our parish. But the rules say you must, uh, handcuff a ten-year-old. A safety officer doesn't do it. A police officer says this rules must do. So what I'm, I'm asking, whoever's going to be in charge and who is going to be doing the training, that we have a, a sensitivity training course implemented in that to assure the public that we're not just gung-ho, we're going to do the very best we can because we're dealing with children, not eighteen-year-old young men and women, but seventy, eighty-year-olds as well. So that's, that's my comment. That's what I'm asking.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bruce. So one, a couple of things. One is, uh, one, the SSOs will be addressed, uh, Thursday? Is that right? Thursday. Okay. It'll, it'll be a budget issue that we address. Can we close that curtain, please? And secondly, and again, if any off, if any of the, the officers want to speak on this, feel free, but as far as I've learned, and again, we've spent a lot of time, SROs are not, um, they're not, they're, first off, they're not rookie cops that, that just, you know, put through SRO training. Uh, they're seasoned police officers that have learned how to deal with people, um, and then they're specially selected. Uh, they're specially selected for their counseling ability, their mentorship, um, and then, again, they go through SRO training specifically for how to, uh, perform police functions in a school environment. Um, if anyone wants to add to that, Mr. Lachley.
Mr. Bruce, if I could speak to what you have, you just mentioned. I'm also in support of the SSOs. I understand the correlation between our SROs, SSO, and administration. The only SSO I have is at Acadia, which is at a high school, and with the amount of time I spend in that school...
training, that we have a sensitivity training course implemented in that to assure the public that we're not just gung-ho, we're going to do the very best we can because we're dealing with children. Not 18-year-old young men and women, but 70, 80-year-old children as well. So that's, that's my comment. That's what I'm asking.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Broussard. So a couple of things. One is, one, the SSOs will be addressed Thursday, is that right? Thursday. Okay. It'll be a budget issue that we address. Can we close that curtain, please? And secondly, and again, if any of the officers want to speak on this, feel free, but as far as I've learned, and again, we've spent a lot of time, SROs are not, they're not, first off, they're not rookie cops that just, you know, put through SRO training. They're seasoned police officers that have learned how to deal with people. And then they're specially selected. They're specially selected for their counseling ability, their mentorship, and then again, they go through SRO training specifically for how to perform police functions in a school environment. If anyone wants to add to that, Mr. Lachley.
Mr. Broussard, if I could speak to what you have, you just mentioned. I'm also in support of the SSOs. I understand the correlation between our SROs, SSO and administration. The only SSO I have is at Acadia, which is at a high school. And with the amount of time I spend in that school, I see the role the SROs play, the role the administration plays, and the role the SSO plays. You're correct, in some instances, that's maybe the only adult figure they have in their life or mentor or so forth and so on. In a school situation, you don't send an SRO in a classroom to get a child. You send a SSO instead. You don't send an armed police officer. I've seen it in action. I've seen SROs, I've seen it all in action. I'm in favor of keeping them, but I don't think this portion tonight is to eliminate, you know, the SSOs. I do believe they're important. I'm in favor of SROs in all schools because we don't want to be the school system. I don't want anything to ever happen to any of our children with somebody with bad intentions. And we need these SROs and the ones I know I have in my schools. I have a deputy with the sheriff department and I have three with Scott PD and they're invaluable. They're invaluable to the environment, to the two middle schools and the high school. But I am with you on the support of SSOs, but I don't think this has anything, this particular item doesn't have anything to do with eliminating them.
All right. Any other comments from the board on the SRO expansion objectives? Yes, sir.
The comment wasn't keeping one or the other, just the duties of one versus, versus the other. Like you mentioned, the safety officer can go in the classroom and get, and get the student. And we lose, we, that portion, that sensitivity of that is being, is probably be lost.
Liaison between SROs and the administration. I got you. I'm with you on that one.
All right. Any other comments on the SRO expansion objectives? Mr. Santani.
I do have a few questions and I'm going to do my best to pretend like I'm an attorney. I know the answers to these questions, but I wanted to make sure that we had these on the record so that everybody walks out of here with a clear understanding of what, what the next steps are. So the first is, how will the relationship, slipping to the org chart, organizational chart, how will the relationship between the sheriff's office and the individual chiefs of police be defined? You know, we see them on, we see that the local policemen will report through their chief of police, but we don't really know how each of those departments will interact or what their roles and responsibilities will be with the sheriff's office. Do we have this or how will that be defined?
I can explain it the best way I understand the intent of the org. There is an organizational chart. I don't know if it's been put up. One of the, one of the important aspects that we've learned through just talking with the chiefs is the ability to, you know, their officers work for them. You know, their officers work for them. So the ability to manage, control, they know their officers, they hire their officers, the ability to control the, the officers that wear the same uniform as them, they did not want that, that control delegated to anyone. And I appreciate that. At the same time, all of them have acknowledged, they understand the importance of standard procedures, standard training, the enforcement of that types of stuff, or those types of stuff. So we came to this conclusion that the sheriff's department or the sheriff, the sheriff himself or his designee, if in the process of establishing the training, the SOPs and the enforcement, would do that via the respective chiefs or their designee. How they do that on a day-to-day basis, I don't know. You know, and I think that's one of the things to be determined. It's probably going to be very similar to the Safe Schools Meeting and the interaction. I mean, our police departments obviously already interact significantly, so I think it'll be along the same lines of the things that they're already doing together.
In the event of an incident at a school, who was the commanding officer in charge of the scene?
I think that will come into the standard operating procedure, but I also think it's going to be very similar to how they currently operate. They currently have, and we've had some discussions on this, they currently have procedures, and I don't know if these procedures are written anywhere or if these are more, they know their own limitations. They know, but they also value, you know, who's already on the scene, who, those types of things. I mean, I don't want to bring up past instances of this, but, but we see it every day when we come, when we're driving, actually on my way to Carron Crow to meet Chief Anderson, I came across, actually, it was a city marshal police vehicle that was assisting, I think it was a sheriff's deputy with an accident on the side of the road. So within the ranks, and please, if any gentlemen want to speak on it, feel free, but within their interactions as agencies, I think they already have that figured out. I, you know, I think we're going to get into tactics and SWAT stuff and all that kind of thing, but, but I think depending on the scale of the incident, they, they already have a way of working that out.
Mr. President, if I might add, the intent here also is for the school system to contract individually with each one of the chiefs and the municipalities as well as separately with the sheriff. So that could also help the necessary division, you know, from, from the org chart standpoint.
And I think I made this comment at one of our committee meetings. I view a lot of what this org chart does to be, you know, pre-incident from, you know, the everyday up until the incident starts. Once the incident starts, it goes from being a school issue, right, and a prevention issue to a, I think the term they use is color of law issue. It is a, it is a, it is a police officer's obligation to react issue. And once that switch is turned, and again, this is my interpretation of what I've learned, once that switch is turned, they go into their reflex mode, how they would normally operate, they interact with each other all the time. I mean, we have a, as far as I understand, in our parish, we have a City of Lafayette SWAT and we have a sheriff SWAT. And if they're in Broussard or Youngsville or Carron Crow and they have to call on one of those, they know how to operate and they, you know, if it's a certain type of crime scene, they know who to call. So I think once that, you know, again, I see this as pre-incident. Once the incident starts, it turns into that color of law and that reflexual, this is how we operate.
That was my next question, by the way. Thank you for saying that. Finally, I just want to know, what is the next step? Where do we go from here? Is this the, what we're delivering to the chiefs as a group and asking them to start implementing so we can start contract negotiations or what are we, what are we doing? It says we're approving the objective, so.
I thought, let's see.
That's what the recommended action was.
Okay. There was a modification to that that said that we would authorize a superintendent to begin contract negotiations based off of these objectives. So that may need to be what the motion says. I don't know if that got updated. It obviously didn't get updated in the board docs. But yes, to answer your question, the idea was before tonight, assuming this passes, you know, we were acting as either committees or individual board members and we need, we need, the nine of us need to speak with some sort of consistent voice and we need to give them direction and say, hey, look, this is what we want, please figure it out. So then the next step is, hey, the board said this is what we want, let's go figure it out. And then I would like it to say that we authorize a superintendent to begin, or to negotiate the contracts for these services. But it also, it's a little more complicated than that because it's also negotiating with municipalities for coverage. So we might need to massage the motion language.
Might I suggest that we stick with the motion language as it reads and then, you know, I don't think we're going to magically negotiate 10 contracts before June 6th. So, you know, I think we'll be doing, doing very, very well to have this all resolved and put to bed by the beginning of August.
Yeah, I think that's great.
So let's, let's do this and then we can continue the conversations that we've been having and keep the ball moving.
Right. This gives us clarity on the goal. From there, we can start discussions with the chiefs and the sheriff and also the municipalities about funding and also figuring out some of these dynamics and draft procedures and those types of things. So, yes, sir.
I just want to ask a question of our police officers here and I don't want to bring up a tragedy, but, you know, you're talking about what could possibly happen in a school we had happen at the Grand Theater. And probably the majority of you in here were there. And is it, is it my understanding from talking with people that on that night, that just about every agency in this parish worked together, unified, without a problem for the good of, and safety of our citizens? I think, I think it went down pretty, pretty well from, from a safety standpoint and all of you working together. And I mean, what, I'm sure you had, the sheriff department had SWAT there as did Lafayette PD and, I mean, I about imagine when the call went out, every officer in this town, whether on duty or off, was in route, correct? I would pretty much think so. Dedicated and served to protect, okay? So I think we already know our agencies can work together. And I don't think they have a problem with driving up on the scene, no matter what municipality or whether it's in the parish, and coming together as one, because I think we have a very good group of professionals in law enforcement in this parish. And I just wanted to bring that up in case the public or the parents would have, need an idea or an example of exactly how all of you would work together. From what I remember reading, I think that pretty, it went pretty well, flawlessly from, you know, a civilian standpoint. I'm not a law enforcement agent and I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Ms. Morrison.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that once we negotiate within municipalities, is it going to come back to the board? I know Dr. Aguilar is going to be working with them to come up with the contracts and all, and I was just wondering if you knew at this time how we will handle that, will it come back to the board or?
I would assume that with the magnitude of these contracts and the dollar amounts that they would come back to the board. Unless we pass a motion later just to give them the authority, but yes. Mr. Broussard.
Mr. President, if I may put one of the great leaders on the spot to come up and act and let us know how well this, what we're putting together is going to work. Anyone of our great leaders.
Just a minute. End of the aisle. And certainly there are plenty of great leaders here. For those who don't know me, I'm Toby Aguilar. I'm the chief of police of Lafayette. And I think that the board is to be commended on your efforts to proactively protect our children. I think that there's certainly a lot of work for the chiefs and the sheriff to do, but I will say this, that your sheriff of Lafayette Parish and all of the chiefs of police, we all meet regularly. We've all become pretty good friends and generally we speak with one voice. And so although there's a lot of, we've got to do some, there's some nuances and there's some work to do, I think in the end, we're all going to come together and we're going to find the best way to protect our kids together. And in that, I am confident. So the roadmap you guys are giving us today is certainly something we'll start working on right away and, and we look forward to reporting back to you when we've come together with a plan with much more specifics.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Adam Secretary, I'd like a call for the vote.
This, this is just the objectives?
Yes.
Dr. Chasson, do you see it up for a vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Nine, four, none against.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is 3.9, approval to advertise and accept proposals. Mr. Santani, you pulled that item?
If y'all have another meeting to go to, y'all can feel free to.
All right. So here we are. Item 3.9, approval to advertise and accept proposals. RFP number, it says draft, universal screening and progress monitoring. We have a motion to approve and advertise and accept proposals with a second from Mr. And Mr. Santani has a question.
Ms. Sami, do we have an idea of what the ultimate cost of this RFP, like what the bids are going to be, ballpark? Because I know the, the testing that we're using now, the NWEA we're talking about was $330,000, I believe?
$340-something, yes.
$340-something. Do we have an idea what this new RFP is going to, going to save us? Because I remember you saying that was the idea of going to Ice Deep and lead 360, right?
We have received a few quotes already from some competing, competing vendors and we're looking at about $155.
$155 savings or total?
Total.
Thank you very much.
Wait a minute. Are you, are you giving out information that we received, Ms. Sami?
Am I giving out?
The $155, what does that represent?
That's the cost of a universal screener for the students.
We're, we're asking to bid on it?
We're asking for proposals.
Have we received any?
No, sir.
Oh, we have not received any?
No. We've had some eager participants wanting to send us some quotes.
Ms. Morris.
So something I've learned about recently is the whole tier system for curricula, our curriculum. So I'm wondering if this is the same type of thing that's going to have different tiers or qualities?
It does.
That we're going to consider and that's going to be brought to the board as well so that we know.
Yes, ma'am. Which was one of the reasons why we felt it was necessary to take a look at what we were currently using, which is a tier three assessed by the State Department. And we're, in the rubric scale of the point system, we do have a place in there for the appropriate tier one.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I pointed to page 14 where they have the evaluation criteria and it says, Curriculum Resources Review Tier.
All right. I did not open this up to public comment. I apologize. So I'd now like anyone that has a question on this motion to approve, to advertise and accept proposals for RFP, a draft, universal screening and progress monitoring. Anyone want to make any public comment on this item? All right. Now that I've done that, any other board member comments on this item?
Seven, four, none against.
All right. Next item on the agenda, 3.14, adoption of policy DFAB. All right. There is no motion on the floor of the object, or sorry, the item dies. Next item, actually, final item on the agenda, 3.16, revisions to policy GBNA, reduction in personnel.
I pulled that. I had, I had a couple of que-
I pulled that, I had a couple of questions on that.
Want me to make the motion? I can make the motion if you want, for discussion. I move that the board approve the revisions to policy GBNA, reduction in personnel as proposed.
A second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the revisions to policy GBNA, reduction in personnel, motion by Mr. Hidalgo, second by Ms. Morrison. And, let me open it up to public, and then I'll do it. So, for this, are there any public comments on the revisions to policy GBNA, reduction in personnel? No public comments. All right. Now, board member comments, Mr. Lachley.
Okay, it looks like, looks like some of the changes here are confusing me, not confusing me, I'm just wondering why. One being, the school board shall determine the necessity of reduction in personnel by majority vote of board members present. Why are we eliminating the two-thirds majority vote?
Sure. So, after reviewing this policy, had some concerns. I called Mr. Hammond, Bob Hammond, and we had a pretty lengthy conversation about this policy, and Danielle also chimed in. This policy kind of predates Act One. This is kind of back when board members had more control over personnel than we do now. And this was a mechanism for them to, this is one of the reasons that Act One is a lie, right? This was a mechanism for board members to have close-to-direct say-so over what happens with personnel. Unfortunately, what has happened, you know, if this wouldn't be an issue for us, we would just leave it alone and move on. Unfortunately, what has happened is that it ties our hands, and it leads us to potential litigation, because if you have a reduction in force, and you eliminate, you know, say, a class of position, and then you reinstitute that for whatever reason later on, and it's not at least a year later, whoever was in that position before, irregardless of what the circumstances may or may not be, is subject, you know, to come back into that position. So, it's problematic for us as a school system, especially if you don't find out till after the fact, and you hire someone else to fill that position. The two-thirds vote change, that's actually something that Mr. Hammond suggested. He said that he knows of no other school board that requires a two-thirds majority vote of the board, when it, as related to reduction of personnel. He said that that was a stretch, and his recommendation was to change it, and so I certainly had no problem putting my name on it if he recommended it. Let me add, you know, a majority vote of the board members present is, with the exception of some really, you know, high-profile votes, is what all of our other policies are. So, a majority of the board members present is Robert's rules, and actually, state law, you know, this policy is stronger than state law, which we can do, but unfortunately, it puts us in a situation, not the two-thirds votes, but the, you know, the implications of the, what's called the recall, you know, puts us in a bad place. Thank you.
Any other board member comments on this item? Madam Secretary, a call for the vote. Yeah, Jeremy.
Eight, four, none against.
That concludes our business of tonight. Mr. Hidalgo would ask for a few moments of our time before we adjourn.
Yep, it's a short moment. We noticed earlier on the agenda, we approved the superintendent's evaluation would be done in May. I'd like to ask Ms. Amanda to come hand out the packets. The packets are gonna be due back-sealed here at the school board office by May 18th. May 18th, and... Well, if you read the policy, it's certainly welcome to be there, but the president and vice president will also be there, and we will come up with a time to score, well, you're welcome, by June 1st. I don't know if I still have the floor, Mr. President, or if we want to continue with the jokes, but, so, May 18th is the deadline to turn it in, and June 1st, we'll have the results scored, so that by the June regular board meeting, you know, we can have that evaluation publicized.
Great, thank you. And one final comment from Dr. Chasson.
All right. Really, really quickly, graduation is May 19th. Just gonna ask all the kids to do not get themselves in trouble. I say this every single year, please do not get yourselves in trouble. Finish strong, as well, a little small request to staff, every single year, right about this time, I understand why it happens. I hear about money owed, and lost books, and withheld report cards, and kids can't walk. Just a memo out to the schools, reminding them that, listen, we understand this is your way to recoup the money that kids, yes, they owe, but technically owe, but at the same time, not at the expense of the kids. We're in the business of helping kids, so to threaten a kid with, oh, you can't walk until, they need to just stop repeating that and saying that. And on a separate note, but yet, at the exact same, I'm not sure if this is appropriate, but I can't help myself. If a kid is short of credit, if a kid has performed well for four years, and they didn't do well on one particular course this year, one class, we know they have to go to summer school, they will not be receiving a diploma, we understand that. I'm not sure if we could ever make this mandatory, or maybe we can, maybe we can't, but there are some principals that I know of, that I know that kid has to go to summer school, and they still allow the kid to walk. There's family and friends still coming to these graduations. I don't want to reward anyone who hasn't earned it, but at the same time, a kid falls short with, from 1%, 2%. If a principal can have a heart somewhat, and realize that that kid, it's just walking, and I don't want to embarrass the kid in front of every single person that they've went to school with for the past four years. If you wouldn't mind allowing the kid to walk, knowing the kid still has to come to summer school, they're not receiving a diploma, I personally would appreciate it. I'm not sure if that's appropriate. I can't help myself, because I've heard horror stories, that this kid has, did so amazing and so well, and an art side kid got pregnant that last year, and it was too tough on her, and, I mean, they earned it, and the kid still went to summer school and graduated, but didn't get that hooray for the Cajun Dome and graduation. So, that was my only request. Thank y'all.
All right. Thank you very much. That concludes the business for tonight. Thank you.